Hi, everyone, and welcome to tonight's forum. The Vacaville People's Forum for our school board candidates. Thank you all for attending. I'm really excited to be here. My name is Mary Vasquez. I am a resident of Vacaville and community member. I'm a third generation resident of Vacaville and also third generation of Vacaville Unified School District product, third generation Vacaville High School graduate. I also have my bachelor's degree from UC Davis and a master's in ethnic studies from San Francisco State University. I have three kids at home, two of which are in the school district. So I'm really proud to be here and a part of tonight's forum. I am a proud Markham parent in the Spice program and also a proud Vacaville High School parent. Like I said, I'm really happy to be here. My co-host will be on in just a minute to introduce herself. But tonight's forum was coordinated by community members and volunteers who were concerned that there wasn't a specific forum in Vacaville that we had to ask specific questions about our candidates in the local elections, both for city council and school board, to ask them about social issues that we want to know about as concerned citizens. And so we've had a group of volunteers helping coordinate this event, folks from various nonprofits around town, advocates, parents, youth, lots of folks involved in tonight's festivities and forum. So we're really excited that folks are here tonight and that the candidates are here to present their thoughts and ideas around our questions. We have six community questions that we'll have community members ask in just a few moments. But I did want to remind the community that this is the first year that we'll have districted elections for Vacaville Unified School District. If you don't know what district you're in, you can go to the Vacaville Unified School Board website and look up your address and determine what district you're in for the specific school board trustee. There are four districts up for election this year, District Two, District Four, District Six, and District Seven. And so with that, thank you all for attending. We hope you're able to watch this video on Facebook and share with your fellow Vacaville residents. So thank you. I'm going to pass it off to my co-host.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sianja Boca Negra, and I am your current Miss Vacaville. I have been a student for Vacaville ever since I was in Head Start all the way to high school. I've lived in Vacaville my whole life, and I'd like to take the moment to welcome candidates and let them know that we have one minute for their introduction statements. So with that being said, we'll start off with District Two, Daniel Santalon.
Hi, everybody. I'm Daniel Santalon. I am the candidate for District Area Two. I am running unopposed. Because of that, I did not get a chance to have my candidate statement show up in anybody's ballot paperwork. So I'm going to go ahead and read that because I was very proud of what I wrote on there. I grew up in Vacaville. I've been going to Vacaville schools. I have also chosen to live and raise my family here in Vacaville. I'm a den leader for a local Cub Scout pack. I recently received my AA in university studies with an emphasis in social studies from Slana Community College. I have two sons who attend schools here in the Unified School District over at Payton. And I am a parent advocate of both of my sons. My youngest child is a foster child who has a wide range of special needs. My oldest has struggled with aspects with English language arts curriculum. These challenges have given me the opportunity to learn about the general ed and special ed programs and how they work together. I worked with the school district and the school staff to find ways to best support my sons. I have worked for the same local financial institution for the last 20 years, and I have developed an understanding of how to deal with local, state, and federal regulations through my job. And I also have, in my current position, have extensive...
Thank you, Daniel. Your time is up. Thank you. District Four, Cecile Connolly. Cecile, your mic isn't working. Have you tried to unmute?
All right.
There we go.
Good. Are we good now?
Yes, you're good. We can hear you.
I'm Cecil Connolly. I'm running in Area Four. I'm a Vennan High School graduate, 1979. I spent 14 years at the reporter newspaper. That was the beginning of my career in the newspaper industry, in which I spent nearly 30 years. I have been since then working as a freelance journalist, and also I worked for the Fairfield Sissou Teachers Association. So I'm well aware of the challenges our schools face. And instead of being on the sideline and asking questions, I figure it's time to jump into the game and be an active participant. So that's why I'm running this year. I am running unopposed, but I wanted to be here tonight. So if anybody asks me questions or wants to get to know me, we can do some.
Thank you, Cecile. Up next, we have District Six, and Tracy Stacy will be presenting first. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. So I'm Tracy Stacy. I also have was raised here in Vacaville, went to Markham Elementary, Jefferson, graduated Vacaville. Have three children. Two have graduated. One graduated a couple of years ago. One just graduated this year, although he'll tell you that he sort of kind of graduated in the COVID, you know, conundrum. And then I have a sixth grader. So all of them are very different. My oldest is a type one diabetic, so I have lots of experience navigating school with that kind of health condition. My middle son was an avid basketball player, sports AP, and some of the challenges that came with that. And my youngest has some challenges with attention and focus. So this whole, I'm with all of the parents out there on distance learning. I've published a magazine since 2005 September. This marks my 15th year publishing a magazine in Slano County for older adults. I'm currently an older adult mental health educator. So my specialty is suicide prevention. I've done lots of suicide prevention throughout the county, specifically in schools and for older adults and everybody who will listen pretty much. So we'll talk about that as some of the questions. I think that means my time's up. But in closing, I also work with choice and aging, and I sit on the community boards for a lot of different kinds of things. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Up next, we have Kelly Walsh.
Hi, sorry, I was having trouble with my mute button. So I am Kelly Walsh, and I'm a parent of two elementary school children in the Vacaville School District. Basically, you know, their learning experience and school environment is a priority for me, as it is for most parents. And I would like to be a voice for all students in the district. And I just believe that there's nothing more important than investing in our children's education. I come from a family who are educators and child advocates. And so I've grown up with a passion for education and have really strong values related to that. I've lived in Vacaville for five years, and I've become involved in the school community as much as possible, just given my challenges as a working parent. And then I've also gained an understanding of the concerns of parents and the issues our teachers face and the obstacles the district has dealt with in terms of the improvement of our schools. And so I have a few priorities. One is the most important for everyone right now is figuring out the distance learning situation. I'd also like to look into expanding our STEAM education and also looking into local business partnerships in our schools. So those are some of my priorities. I don't know how much time I have left.
Yeah, your time is up, Kelly. Thank you, though. Thank you. Up next, we have District Seven, and Michael Kitas will start it off.
Hi there. I want to start out by saying that I think Vacaville Unified is in great shape, and I'm proud of what's been accomplished in the last four years. To be honest, after 17 years on the board, I was thinking about retiring. But then COVID hit, and our entire way of teaching and operating was upended. I feel a deep sense of loyalty and duty to stay on the board and use my experience to help guide the district through the upcoming challenges, when and how to get students back in school, keeping everyone safe, and dealing with inadequate funding from the state. Some of the things I've helped create and I'm most proud of are our relationship with our teachers is the best it's ever been. Every student in the district has a Chromebook for their exclusive use. Most test scores have improved, and we've had a huge rise in AP tests. And we've refunded some of our facilities' bonds that saved taxpayers over $4 million. Things are clearly on the right track.
Thank you, Michael. Up next, we have George Burton.
Thank you. I'm George Burton, and I would just like to say that I'm very proud to say that my...
George, I think you're muted right now. Do you mind? Okay, there we go.
We are.
Yeah. Yeah.
My name is George Burton, and I'm very proud to say that my family has been a part of the Vacaville community for over 130 years. I'm even more proud of the numerous family members that have served or worked in just about every capacity in the Vacaville Unified School District, including my mom, who spent 41 years as a classified employee. Service to our schools and our community has been instilled in me from a very young age all the way through. I feel it's fair to say that any success that I may have achieved was built on the foundation that was provided to me as being a student of Orchard Elementary, Willis-Jeppson Middle School, and a graduate of Vacaville High School. Now, as a parent of a soon-to-be kindergarten student and the husband of a substitute teacher in our district, I am personally invested in the long-term success of our schools. It is so important to me to make sure that every student within our district not only receives an enriching and fulfilling education, but is an environment of safety, security, and inclusion. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you, George. Up next, we had Kayla Hastings, but she declined to participate. So without further ado, we'll move on to the ground rules. So first off, all candidates will get the same question, and they are to respond to the question, not other panelists. You each will have two minutes to answer each question. Each candidate will hear audible chime at 15 seconds. As a notification, it is time to wrap up their response. The order of answering has been randomized and will change with each question. Candidates can ask for questions to be repeated. Every candidate will be given one minute to close at the end of the forum. So to start off our first question, we have Beatriz Cadenas with the Equity Task Force.
Hi, everyone. My name is Beatriz. I'm a community member, and I've lived in Vacaville my whole life, except for when I went off to college. I've worked with K-12 kids, high school students, and more recently, college students, and I'm very invested in our community and our youth. My question today is, on August 6th, Vacaville Unified School District Board members had the opportunity to approve a new elective course. The course in question was an ethnic studies class that would be offered to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. In a vote four to three, the course was not passed. My question to you all is, what are your thoughts of implementing an ethnic studies course as a graduation requirement for our high school students? Thank you.
Tracy, we'll have you go up first.
Great, thank you. So it's really important to understand how we voted on August 6th. So it was brought to our attention as a board that there was a group of community members who felt disenfranchised with the process and with the ethnic studies program as shown to us as a district. And so some of us felt, I think actually I can speak pretty confidently, that overwhelmingly, we are all very supportive and excited about the ethnic studies course and also the ethnic committee that we're having, the cultural competency and supportive committee of people who are pulling everybody together to hear their concerns, what we are good at, what we're bad at, who we need to talk to, who's not at the table. And specifically for that course, we have a plan as a district on how to implement it and get it started and really work it out, and then also make it potentially a requirement for graduation. But it is on our next agenda in September. It was not put off. We made sure that we weren't hurting any master schedules or hurting any students, that the students who wanted to take that course in the first quasi-masters, we're calling it this year, would have an opportunity to take that course in the next quasi-masters because we wanted to hit the pause button and make sure that we were really inclusive and did it right. And we had the opportunity to do so. So the no vote was not a no vote against the class. It was about making sure that we did it justice and that we were inclusive and fully vetted the program and did it right. So I'm absolutely in favor of the class and where we're going and excited about the work that we're going to do. The committee is a group of outstanding individuals who have a heart for social justice, inclusion, and difficult conversations. So I think we're actually on the right track.
Thank you, Tracy. Up next, we have George.
So I, not speaking as not a board member now, I witnessed the meeting in which they discussed the curriculum of that course being put on hold. And I have to say that I understand the reasons for which they put the curriculum on hold because they want to make sure that everyone is included. I think it's very important that we get ethnic studies courses right. We shouldn't just do something for the sake of doing. We should ensure that it's going to reach out and include as many groups as possible. As for it being a requirement to graduate, I think that ethnic studies courses are a requirement for graduation at every major university in the United States. And I think that we should mirror that within our own schools and definitely look at having our ethnic studies courses being part of the graduation requirement for our high school students.
Thank you, George. Up next, we have Daniel.
I took my first ethnic studies course in college, and it was a requirement to get my degree. And I found it invaluable. So I definitely feel it is a class that should have been offered in high school. This was over 25 years ago, so I don't know if they even thought about it back then. But seeing it for ongoing students, having the opportunity to take that class would be a fantastic option for them. It is something that I would definitely consider for as a requirement because, like I said, it was a requirement for me to get my degree. But I do want to see it done as an elective first so it can get its feet wet and the schools can get used to how that class will run and how the student body will respond to it. I definitely see it moving forward in a positive way, especially with the task force that was mentioned before, too, that can bring all inclusivity to that and make it a very viable program. So I definitely see it moving into something that is part of the requirement for graduation.
Thank you, Daniel. Up next, we have Cecile.
Okay. It's deeply disturbing to me that we did not have this class already being offered at our schools. This class being offered at this particular time is a reaction to what happened last year. And if you're not aware of that, I will fill you in. We had students, our high school students, caught on social media openly and freely using racial slurs. Those incidents happened in the fall, yet they were retweeted right after George Floyd's death, and that caused an uproar in the community. So the district, in all of its wisdom, you know, I'm sure the first call was to the NAACP. The second one was, we need an ethnic studies program. You know, I'm sorry to say, maybe a little too little, too little, too late, but I'm glad it's here. I'm glad we're going to include it. I think we learned on the night that that four to three vote that they haven't done enough homework on it yet. Need to go back to square one and maybe look at who we're talking about here. Are we talking about just students of color? Are we talking about all the groups that fall under ethnic? I do not believe it should be a graduation requirement. It should be an elective, and I'll tell you why. You're not going to raise awareness, and you're not going to build sensitivity by shoving it down the students' throats. First of all, I think ethnic studies should be incorporated in almost every class we offer, science, math, English, whatever the case may be, PE. It should be incorporated somehow. Having a specific class for it is great. Making the students take it, I don't think is a good idea. I want them to take it because they want to learn. They want to understand. You force it down their throats, I'm not sure how that's going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecile. Up next, we have Michael. Michael, I think you're muted. Okay, there we go.
Hey, Trace. Thank you for your question. This is a very important moment, I think, not only for the school district, but for everybody. I mean, we had the killing of George Floyd. We had the shooting of Jacob Blake. Everybody is very heightened at this moment, and it's very important for us not to lose this moment. First off, just on the... We have the Equity Task Force. We're talking about specifically the ethnic studies. I think it's extremely important to have this course. I think it's extremely important to make it a graduation requirement. I think a lot of people would not take it unless they were pushed to take it. Yeah, there'll be some people that will go kicking and screaming, but there'll be a lot of people that will just be ignorant, and they won't know. And it's really important to sit down and talk about these things together. I think in 2029, 30, it's actually going to be a state ruled law that it's a graduation requirement. But I want to talk something else that Cecil brought up, and that was the Equity Task Force. Again, this is a special moment for our district and the country all at one time. We can't lose it. This Equity Task Force, which the district has done a great job preparing for and starting to really have listening sessions, talking to people, needs to be in the forefront. It's very important that we not just acknowledge that there is racism, but we have to be anti-racist, and that has to be a consistent message. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Last but not least, we have Kelly.
Hi. So I am in strong favor of ethnic studies as a graduation requirement. And I actually think it should be offered in our curriculum at earlier grade levels. I think it's crucial that our students, you know, understand other cultures and ethnicities and backgrounds. I think there should be Black Studies, La Raza Studies, American Indian Studies, and Asian-American Studies. That's all a part of this graduation requirement. Like I said, right now, there's histories and traditions and cultures and the struggles that different cultures have faced that is completely left out of the curriculum. So I believe it should be a mandatory requirement. I'm excited about the Equity Task Force. I think that's a great first step. But it's definitely something that needs to be incorporated sooner than later, and I do think it needs to be a requirement.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next community question will be asked by Danielle Shay on mental health in schools.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Shay. I was born and raised here in Vacaville, and I'm now raising my own four sons here as well. I'm an education specialist at Cairo's Public Schools and have students there and with Vacaville Unified School District. My question this evening is regarding mental health in schools. According to statistics from the Centers for Disease Control, approximately 13% to 20% of children aged three to 17 years experience a mental disorder in a given year, including anxiety, depression, attention deficit, and behavioral concerns. Those numbers increased to 22% for students living below 100% of the federal poverty level. The Center for Health and Healthcare for Schools tells us that of those children, only 25% will receive the mental health help that they need. And of those that do receive care, 70% to 80% receive that care in a school setting. When considering this information, it has become clear that schools have become a frontline option for student mental health services, particularly for populations that have limited access to personal mental health services. To what extent will you prioritize mental health services in our K through 12 schools, and what strategies would you use to do so?
Thank you, Danielle, for your question. Our first candidate to respond will be George.
That question really speaks to me on a personal level because as a high school student, I suffered very severely from anxiety, to the point that it was very difficult to do a lot of social interactions at the time. And I wish, as a student then, that I would have had access to more help in dealing with situations like that. And so I know what it's like for students to struggle with issues such as anxiety, depression. And what's really important is that we provide access to them to get the help that they need to deal with those difficult situations. I know right now, our district has nine mental health clinicians that are servicing 17 schools. It's a great start, but we need to do more. Also, mental health, while it's important that we service it at school, it starts at home, and we need to make more programs accessible to parents and to families to help deal with these issues at home as well as in concert with what's going on at school. So one of the strategies that I would really look for is partnering with the city for what programs they offer to be able to reach out to families to help deal with these issues at home and then also expand the already, you know, those nine clinicians that we have, expand that service to try to see someone to be at least able to service every school within the district.
Thank you, George. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Daniel.
This is also a very important topic for me because I am a foster parent, and my foster child was traumatized with the entire events that happened that brought him to our house. And so having people have access to the mental health assistance that they're going to need at all levels, from kindergarten all the way through high school, is very important. Having staff that is trauma-informed and trained. My son went to Child Start, and they had fantastic programs that were very helpful to him there. The hardest part is a lot of the parents and families don't know how to get access to it or have had trouble getting the access to the help they need. So I would prioritize it as very high and also look for ways to make sure that the information of how to get to the assistance is there, how to, and to make the information so readily available that it's right there at their fingertips. And, uh... Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Our next candidate to answer will be Cecil.
Thank you. I remember looking back at my elementary school report cards, and I was described as energetic, kind of a little bit crazy, always a lot of energy. Come to find out, 2001, when I quit drinking alcohol, that I am in the ballpark of bipolar. And some of my drinking was to drown out the spinning in my head. So when it comes to mental health, I was at one time and thought, anybody who goes to a therapist, you're weak. Well, my stance has completely changed because I'm now in mental health, and I appreciate every single thing that is done for me in working with the individuals I have. I think we need to have these kids identified. We need to educate our parents, first and foremost, on what to look for, that it's not just hyperactivity or being energetic. We need to look at the symptoms, educate our parents, and then also incorporate our own campuses for the students to look out for those students themselves. I've been on campuses, and I've worked on a few campuses. And when I see a child eating lunch alone, I encourage other students to go over and join them. So that student doesn't have to be alone, you know? And sometimes that student's doing it by... And sometimes that student's doing it by choice. Sometimes it's because they have been pushed away because they don't behave like everybody else. They don't dress like everybody else. They've got issues. We need to bring them into the fold, support them, and then give them all the services they have, first by educating their families, and then by getting them what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Michael.
Thank you, Danielle, for your question. I am, uh, my, my day job, my regular job, I'm the senior manager for Mental Health Services in Vacaville for Solano County. So my clinics in Solano is in, my clinics are in Vacaville, and all the kids and adults that get served by the county in Vacaville come through our clinics. This is very close to home for me. When I came to Vacaville, when I came to the board 17 years ago, there were no mental health clinicians. I mean, now we have nine. We've put an amazing amount of money and focus on mental health in the district. We also have an $80,000 contract with the Vacaville Police Department. Actually, people don't know this, but the Vacaville Police Department has a first unit. And their first unit actually is all social workers, and they have interns, and they work in almost all of the schools. And they give frontline mental health services to kids. So we can always do better. We can always do better. But we're doing, we're doing better than anybody else around in our county in Vacaville. And, um, you know, to what somebody else said, I mean, it's so important because if a student doesn't have enough food, they're not going to learn. If a student has emotional disturbance or emotional issues going on, they also can't learn. And it's going to be, unless you really look at it, it's going to be associated with other things. So pretty much like everybody else said, it's super important to focus on mental health issues and to the emotional well-being of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Kelly.
Hi, yeah, just like everyone else said, I think mental health is definitely a priority. For me, I have a few ideas. You know, I'd want to bring mental health advocates into the schools. I know we already have those nine counselors, but you know, having people to educate the staff and parents and students on the symptoms of and kinds of help that students can get for mental health problems would be great. I think developing flexbox schedules for students so that they can access the counselors when they need to, and I think that might already exist, but just making sure that the students have the time and are given the resources, all available resources to them. And then to coordinate the community-based support as well. So making sure that there, if they need the extra support, that there's a community-based support there for them as well. And then just encouraging on our campuses, helping others and promoting social and emotional competency, I think is, is key, and just helping to ensure that we have a positive and safe school environment. And making sure we're teaching and reinforcing positive behaviors throughout all our campuses. But, you know, I'd really like to see more mental health counselors. I think we have a good amount now, but I don't think it's enough. So I'd like to see more funding for that.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next candidate to respond to the question will be Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. But I will, I will repeat everything they've heard already, but I will say that, that this is also one of the most important priorities I have. So I too am very proud of the fact that the district stepped up, and we all agree that this is crucial to all of our students' learning and have named and claimed mental health services in our LCAP. So we're holding ourselves accountable to not only putting money towards mental health, but also holding ourselves accountable to outcomes and making sure that we're building a system that actually works. I think it's important for the community to know that up until recently, in the last four or five years, mental health services in school systems were typically for severe general ed students and mostly 95% for special ed students. And so we have really been progressive and innovative in finding out how to make sure that we don't mix up funding and we can serve our general ed kids too, because we know that all of our kids need support. And so I'm really proud to say that we were the first district in the county to have a suicide prevention plan where we brought teachers, parents, community members, law enforcement, and students together to come up with a plan of how we were going to handle school culture. What was our prevention going to look like? What was our post-vention going to look like? What were the interventions going to look like? And it does start, you know, in kindergarten. Like Cecil said, we have what we call multi-tier systems of support in our schools. And we're teaching kindergartners and up. You know, if you see someone sitting alone, that's the cue they might need help, right? So, and teaching them to see that, know what that means, to be kind, to have courage, to be responsible, right? So hopefully by the time they get to junior high and high school, some of their mental health situations have been mitigated. And if they're not, we have supports. And we've done, we trained anyone who wanted to be trained in this district. So I personally teamed up with some of our mental health team as a master trainer for assist for suicide prevention training. And we trained a few hundred of our staff, from principals to yard duties and anybody lunch people, because we know that all of our staff touches kids in different capacities. And so there's always, like Michael said, there's lots to work to do. There's no shortage of people who need. And so it's important to know that right now it's probably even more imperative because CPS reported just in the last two months that because people, school's not in session, child abuse reports are down, which sounds great, except for that the reports that are coming in are exponentially more severe than normal. And our kids aren't back in school. We're kids, you know, we're kids at risk are being seen. So the school system really is the fabric of how we're going to support families and students. And so there's lots of work to do. So keep your eyes and your open, you know, and see who needs help. But I'm proud of what we've done and looking forward to the future of what we're going to do.
Thank you for your question, Danielle. Up next, we have Lena Mendez with Curriculum.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Lena Mendez. I have a child in the Spanish immersion program at Markham Elementary. I am, um, I have all of my educational degrees in education, including one from Harvard and one from UC Davis. So my question is, educational research shows that when students see themselves reflected in their curriculum, they will be more engaged. As a board member, how will you ensure that the current and any new curriculum provides equity and representation of the students we serve in Vacaville Unified School District and for them to see themselves reflected in it?
Good question, Lena. So first, we'll have Daniel answer it.
Curriculum is very important, especially, like it was saying, to see themselves in that curriculum. My area has a lot of the minority students in it, and them being able to see themselves makes a big difference because I know they have been reading some books. This was previous years, pre-COVID, that had characters in it that were like them, and it did engage them much more. So I would definitely make sure when, anytime we're reviewing a curriculum, verify that we are reviewing all the options for curriculum choices. Also, to make sure we tap our greatest resource, which is going to be the teachers, the people who are in the classrooms teaching these things, to make sure that the curriculum that we're trying to choose from is one that they can implement, that they can make sure it is hearing to, being very inclusive to all the students they have. And so I just make sure it's a very good partnership and a lot of discussion involved when picking any type of curriculum.
Thank you, Daniel. Up next, we have Cecil.
Thank you. As I mentioned, when we talked about ethnic studies, I think that we need to incorporate that across the board in our education. It's not just one class. It's not this program. It's not this curriculum. Across the board, we need to incorporate that. And I think also the district needs to do a better job with our staffs and our faculty because it's disappointing, and I wonder how they feel when a student of color goes to school and the only adult of color they see is a janitor, a cafeteria worker, or a crossing guard. Not one administrator of color, not one teacher of color, or not many of them in proportion to the students. And then you ask them why they react the way they do is because that's what we need to do. We need to go out and we need to work on this. Being in the journalism field, I have been, there have been situations where we have done minority hires and made it a priority to diversify our staffs. And every time, we've been rewarded with getting an excellent person. I think it's the same thing here. We need to reach out, find teachers of color, find employees, classified employees of color, that we can bring in counselors, whatever, into our campuses so our students see themselves as adults. You know, you're only going to see so much in a book or video. See themselves in the adults on campus, I think will make a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Michael, we'll have you answer the question next.
Thank you, Lena, for the question, or Dr. Lena, for the question. It's such an important question, especially again, I am so focused on what's going on, you know, these days, the awakening that's happening in our country, our district, our state. You know, what's clear is, and you can see by, by curriculum, it's gotten a lot better over time. California is a pretty progressive state. But, you know, there's a structural racism that a lot of times it's very important to pay attention to. Because, you know, being a white man, sometimes you don't think of it. You just, because it's, and that's the structural racism. You don't think of it in your mind. You don't pay attention to the fact that, you know, in our district, 36% of the students are Latinx. You know, so we have to make sure, and Lena, I'm going to say, it sounds like you have an education and experience in this way. You know, maybe you can help us. Maybe you can help us review curriculum. I'm sure we could use some expertise in that way. So thank you for your question.
Thank you, Michael. We'll have, we'll have Kelly go next.
Hi, yeah, this is a great question. I think that schools have to change the structures and culture and programs of the curriculum and instruction to meet the needs of a diverse student body. We need to focus not only on race, but on socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, disability, family background, religious beliefs. There's, there's so many different things when we talk about equity. And I think we need to bring the, these different backgrounds or take into consideration these different backgrounds that each student brings to the school setting. I think that we need to set aside some time and space to talk about equity and maybe have trained facilitators come to the school and do that with our staff and our students. But basically, we need to be promoting diversity and and the different areas of equity that I was just talking about throughout all of our campuses. And we need to make sure that our educators are, you know, reflecting the needs of the diverse student bodies that we have.
Thank you, Kelly. We'll have Tracy go next.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Mendez. So I, I just want to say that I'm actually pretty proud of, not pretty proud, I'm proud of, of the fact that it has come up and we're mindful as a district. So we have work to do. We have recruitment, but diversity and recruitment is a goal that we haven't dialed in yet. So when we go to diversity fairs, sometimes we've started to evaluate the pool of people who actually respond to our positions that are vacant, you know, teachers, principals, administrators, anybody. And we're really mindful of making sure that we know who will represent students at each school. And we actually have quite a few non-white administrators. So if you look through the district, there, we do have representation. Can we always use more? Yes. Do we need to make it a priority? Yes. And I think that the Equity Task Force has spoken to this, that they're working with HR, and that one of the things they're going to do is talk about, how do we make sure that people are represented? So if we don't have people applying for positions, we still need to make sure that students feel like people who are like them are accessible to them. That curriculum speaks to them. They can see themselves and hear themselves. We do have a very specific process for curriculum. It's state mandated. So people who do care, it's actually all of our new curriculum before it's approved is available for people to review, to give input, to ask questions, to complain about, or to say, great, that's great. So there is a process, and the state does kind of limit us. But I will say that we have a team of educators who are experts in this, who are tasked with, with bringing the best curriculum available that's approved from the state to us for approval. And there is a community process for that. But what I'm hearing is that we probably need to be much more mindful of getting that community process out so people can be more involved in understanding how new curriculum comes to be and how we influence what we do. So definitely taking notes, but I think that the Equity Task Force will definitely be picking this up to keep it on the forefront, and you'll see it probably in an LCAP or in a plan because we're definitely going to involve the community. So thank you for the question. Oh, because I have a couple of seconds left, I will tell you that we are bringing in the UC Davis in project, which is a huge project. So thank you.
Sorry, Tracy. Thank you. We'll have George answer the question next.
I think that that last point there about involving the community in the curriculum selection process is really important, that people understand the steps that go into selecting a curriculum. And it's important that we make sure that this new Equity Task Force has a voice in that as well and provides guidelines to the district when they're selecting a curriculum to make sure that we are being inclusive of everyone. The student in the classroom should not only see themselves reflected in the curriculum, but as so many of the other candidates have said, they need to see themselves reflected in those that are teaching that curriculum as well. And I think that's very important to expand that idea beyond just curriculum, but to our staff as well. I think we do a good job, but I think we can do better. And this is something that you always want to work on. You want to make sure that a student feels safe and comfortable as who they are, regardless of who they are. And part of doing that is making sure that they see themselves in that curriculum and that they see themselves in who's teaching that curriculum.
Thank you, George, for, thank you for responding, George. Our next community member to ask a question around funding is Destiny Inigas.
Hi, I'm Destiny Inigas. I am a Vacaville native, a mama of three, and a middle school educator. I am incredibly passionate about education and ensuring our students and teachers have the proper resources to be successful in their roles. With that being said, Vacaville Unified often falls in the bottom 20th percentile in terms of spending per student. Sometimes this is thousands of dollars below state average spending per student. As a school board member, what would you do to support more funding and resources for our students and teachers?
Thank you, Destiny, for your question. Our first candidate to respond to the question will be Cecil.
Thank you. I'm sure by now you've seen the new football stadium at Vacaville High School. It's beautiful. And last year, Will Seawood opened its new football stadium. Absolutely beautiful. But many of our schools are falling down beam by beam. Vacaville High School, from what I understand, is the campus, since it became a high school in 1960, it used to be Modern Vista Elementary School. That is still the original buildings. There used to be a lot of portables. Those were replaced by new buildings. But my point is, we need to make sure that we're not looking at short-term fixes. We're looking at long-term solutions, you know? And that's the thing with spending our money on our, on our students, is let's come up with a plan, not for today and tomorrow. Let's look for a plan for a year, five years, and 10 years. We can measure our progress. Once again, I think it's great that we have all these athletic facilities. But if I was a student, if I was a parent, John Q. Pack taxpayer, and my child did not play sports, and they went to a portable classroom at a high school where a raccoon dug through the floor and joined the English class, I'd be a little concerned. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Cecil. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Michael. Thank, thank you, Cecil. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Michael.
Okay, Destiny, nice to see you. You know, part of, part of that, that you're speaking to is part of an old funding pattern. I mean, I'm still, I'm not saying it's still not, you know, somewhat the case and can look at that, but they've equalized a lot of the districts and everybody gets funded on LCFF. I'm not going to get technical, but it's local control funding formula. And it's what's been happening for like the last eight years or so. But unfortunately, it's only really brought us back to like two thousand and eight level when it's, when you look at inflation. So California schools are woefully funded. Different thing, you can look at different studies, they say maybe between forty-first and forty-seventh in the nation, which is incredibly embarrassing for California, which is like the equivalent to like the seventh largest country in the world or the seven richest country in the world. So there are a couple of things we can do. One thing is called, one thing if you've heard of the School and Communities First Act. It's a proposition, it's Proposition fifteen, it's going to be on the ballot in November. It can bring up to twelve billion dollars to schools in California. So that's, I think that's a really important thing to to support. Secondly, we've been doing really well. Vacaville has been really good with its money. We have actually the highest reserve we've ever had, about twenty-five million dollars. We have about almost twenty percent reserve now. It's going to get rough the next few years and everybody knows that. So it's good that we have that reserve. It's also good because with COVID, with the pandemic, the state is deferring a lot of our payments. And if we didn't have that, we would have a cash crunch. So we're going to be able to use that and borrow for some other funds to do that. But I'm happy to sit down, Destiny, with you and look at the figures and, you know, see what we could figure out.
Thank you, Michael. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Kelly.
Hi, thanks, Destiny, for the question. Yeah, it's, it's true, our schools are so underfunded and I think there's a few different ways we can try to tackle this major issue here. One is Prop fifteen, I looked into the figures and I think it's about seven million that it would bring into Vacaville. And yeah, that ballot measure is key. It will close corporate tax loopholes and invest, you know, just billions in, every year in schools and local services. So I am excited to support that proposition and I think we just need to look at targeting extra funds to help our low-income children and look at fixing the funding gaps for individual schools within the districts. Because all of our schools are different, but they, but they all have different needs and so, so we should really target any extra funds we have to help our more low-income schools and we just really need to improve state education funding in terms of increased spending on public education and that involves lobbying our public elected officials at both the state and federal levels. The local control funding formula has, has definitely improved the way that we receive funds and and helps us administer that on a local level. But we really need to advocate with our local elected officials for, for them to prioritize education funding. And there's also other things like looking into other grants and and partnering with local businesses and things like that, but also reducing our reliance on the local property taxes to fund education is something else we should look at. So there's, there's a variety of different things we can do, but it is true, like our schools are definitely underfunded and we need to do something about it.
Thank you, Kelly. The next candidate to respond to the question will be Tracy.
Thank you, and thank you, Destiny. Oh, can you hear me now? Sorry. Thank you, thank you, Destiny. So I want to make sure that we're clear that we actually, this has come up for a while in Vacaville to wanting to make sure that we were getting every penny entitled to our students. And so actually, not long ago, there's actually a study available if anybody wanted to find it. I'm at the district, it's available for you to see, where we made sure that we were capturing every dollar available. So we are our SELPA, our special education JPA of sorts for our SELPA is woefully underfunded. And so general dollars tend to, we have to, we have very strict responsibility and directives that we have to meet. And so like Michael said, we have been very mindful that any cut that happens happens as far away from the classroom as possible, that we're super proactive, that we protect our rainy day fund, that we protect our reserve to make sure that as we face the uncertainty of the next few years, no one would have ever imagined that COVID would happen and that we would be facing just uncharted financial ruin, right? So we need to, we are really actually very proactive in making sure that the quality of the education, the money that touches our students is protected. So we have talked about doing a ballot measure specifically for a property tax, because the only tax that we can control locally in perpetuity is if the community says, yeah, we'll absorb a property tax that will fund general fund because that funds anything. So and, you know, to Cecil's point around the generosity of our community passing Measure A, we saved, Michael said this earlier, but we saved millions of dollars in taxpayer debt by refinancing and cashing out early and holding ourselves accountable and have really leveraged those funds to make sure that we are touching every roof and AC and all of those things. So we do have some pretty old-school schools. And so our priority is to make sure that everything is safe and current and that our kids are getting the benefit of the most current technology available, science and technology and all those things. I heard the beep, so I got distracted, but thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. The next candidate to respond will be George.
It's a really good question. You know, the something when it comes down to funding and I'm hearing a lot of, you know, the only source that we can go after is looking at doing further property tax measures. I think that we need to look at alternative options and I think that that's been mentioned before. It really comes down to not so much about how many dollars are we spending, but how are we spending the dollars available to us? And I think it's really important to make sure that we do consistent and regular reviews of the budget and ensure that our funds are being allocated correctly and being utilized to help the students. In two thousand and three, back when I was, actually it was two thousand and two, two thousand and three, we went through a pretty severe budget crisis while I was a student at Vacaville High School. And I recall being in those board meetings, begging, pleading to ensure that music programs, that some of the other sports programs were saved or that were able to continue. Looking at the impact, the long-term impact that COVID is going to have, I'm very concerned that we are going to see a long-lasting economic impact. It's great that the district currently has a rainy day fund, but is that going to be sufficient to get us through the upcoming potential economic turmoil? I want to be there to make sure that we see ourselves through this difficult time that's bound to come. And, you know, at that time, the community did come together beyond just doing a taxpayer or going after property tax. VPHEF was founded out of the budget crisis of the early two thousands. The Vacaville Public Education Foundation came forward and came out of that budget crisis and the community was able to contribute and help fund the schools through that measure. In fact, they actually directly funded many of those programs that I spoke about previously. So again, we can look to the community to help and I think it can be done through other measures beyond just tax initiatives. And we want to make sure that we are reaching out to the community and listening to their decisions as well.
Thank you, George. The next candidate to respond to the question will be Daniel.
Yeah, the funding's going to be in a lot of trouble as soon as COVID's over, yeah. There we go. All right. So as I was saying, the states are going to have a lot of trouble as soon as COVID's over. There's going to be a big budget crisis all around. Glad to hear that we do have a rainy day fund. I am in full agreement with George that we do need to take a close look at what we are currently spending our money on. That is a big way to make sure that the funds being used are being utilized properly and to the most effectiveness that they can be. Always look for other sources, as was explained by a variety of the other answers. Partnerships with local businesses is a great idea. One of the businesses supports my son's school and they get a lot of good response from that. And it helps bring the community together that way. Also, no, we can add all options available, both federal and local, is going to be very important to make sure that we can know whether the storm that's coming.
Thank you, Daniel. For our next question, we have Chris Vasquez with LGBTQ.
Hi, I'm Chris Vasquez and I live in downtown Vacaville and I work in the global event industry. I'm third-generation Vacaville resident on both sides of my family. I'm raising four kids here in town. They're all spanning the three schools that I actually attended, Orchard, Jepson, and Vacaville High School. So support across the district for families and students is very important to me. So my question is, as a candidate, are you aware of what support is available for LGBTQ students and families within VUSD at different levels currently? As a candidate, would you plan to implement during your term to make even more support available for our LGBTQ students and families?
Thank you for your question, Chris. We'll have Michael answer it first.
Hello, Chris. Thank you for your question. You know, a few years ago, there was a big meeting at the city council and I was there along with lots of other people. And what it was, was to get the city to do an LGBTQ proclamation. And they didn't do it. And it was, it was a very intense meeting. Especially since there was a group of people that sang religious hymns during the time, which I felt was particularly insulting to the people that were there. And you know, I think the most important thing we could do and which I have wanted to do and I would like to do is on a structural basis, I think Vacaville has to join some of the other cities and other school districts and actually do a resolution, a proclamation for LGBTQ rights, you know, from the school district, from the board. And I think it has to start there. You know, I think that we were talking about it in another question about how important it was for people to be able to see a mirror of themselves in the community. And I know as a therapist, I've worked with many LGBTQ kids, because I work mostly with kids, and the shame and the guilt is, is, is just so sad, so horrible to feel. And, you know, it's funny, I was watching yesterday, there's a show on Apple TV called Dear... dot-dot-dot, and they had Lin-Manuel Miranda on there. And right after the Pulse shooting in Orlando, he got a Tony Award. And, you know, like forty-nine people were killed in that, in that shooting. And the only thing he ended up saying was, "Love is love is love is love is love is love." And I think that's really the most important thing. We're all the same. And that's what we have to be talking about. You know, we're all people. So that's where I go. Thank you.
Hi, sorry.
Hi.
Oh, I think our okay, sorry, our microphones aren't working. Thank you, Michael, for that response. Kelly will be next.
Hi, thank you, Chris, for the question. I, you know, our LGBT youth are just more likely to experience stress and fear in school than our non-LGBTQ. And, you know, whether it's verbal harassment or physical harassment because of their sexual identity or gender identity and expression, it's something that we need to address in our schools. I think that LGBTQ history is now a requirement in California, so definitely incorporating education around LGBTQ issues in our curriculum is one step we can take. I think we need to expand our LGBTQ student organizations to provide support for our students. We need more professional development on how to address LGBTQ issues and have teachers and administrators build more inclusive cultures and then also for them to be able to identify anti-LGBTQ behaviors and harassment. And then there's also just, you know, highly politicized issues like allowing transgender students to use bathrooms aligned with their identity. You know, we need to support that and and, and, and just overall give more support on campus to our LGBTQ youth. And whether that's through student organizations or through more professional development, I think we have to look at all aspects of this. And I would also support a proclamation from the district, you know, expressing our support for LGBTQ rights. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Kelly, up next we have Tracy to answer the question.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris. So I will say this, so the tides have shifted because it used to be that we did not seek people out because of the personal choice of when and how and who you wanted to know about your personal business. And now our youth are, are much more vocal and, and have so much more stress and we have more awareness and understanding of needs. And I will say that, so I work with the pride, sort of pride, on a regular basis. So there's a gentleman named Jamie who is a fantastic youth counselor who comes to both of our schools and hosts groups and support for people who want it. And our administrators really pay attention to who needs help. They make sure that they are advocating that the students have an LGBT club. When we did, so all four of our, I think our junior highs and high schools, and so five schools have LGBT support groups and, and clubs, student room clubs. When we did our prevention plan for suicide, we really brought students in. And so we were able to, we brought everyone in who was willing to talk about being LGBT and asked them what their biggest need was, what their biggest fear was, how to support them. And it's delicate, right? There's some finesse in how you make sure that people feel comfortable asking for support but aren't necessarily called out if they don't want to be, for safety, for safety at home, for safety at school. So I think we're still navigating that. It's a lot more opportunity to be innovative and to work on the culture at our schools so that students feel safe and have people to go to if they need help and support, that the supporters are there to help them and to celebrate them and to include them in the conversations, just like we're talking about with our ethnic studies and ethnic task, you know, our ethnicities task force. So we do have some formal groups and processes to help people, but not very robust. And so there's a lot more work to do still. So.
Thank you, Tracy. We'll have George answer the question next.
This is another great question. This wasn't a topic that was really talked about when I was in high school. And going on through high school and entering adult life, I've had several friends that have come out as part of the LGBTQ community in their adult life. And it's really upsetting for me to know that they didn't feel comfortable being who they are when they were in high school. And I think that that really goes back to just this core belief that we need to make sure that every student feels safe and secure in being who they are, whoever that might be. We also need to make sure that there are resources available for students if they're struggling with issues. If they want to reach out, if they want to talk to somebody about problems with If they want to reach out, if they want to talk to somebody about problems with bullying or anything else that might be associated with it. You know, I don't recall, it's been 15, 16 years. I don't recall seeing anywhere on campuses where there was a place where you could go and say, these are the resources that you have. We need to see more of that. I really just think that we need to leverage state and federal resources because quite frankly, I don't know what is available at the local level. I think we need to look at those state and federal programs that are out there, like the Trevor Project, for instance. Making sure that our LGBTQ students are supported, just like we are talking about including and supporting every other student that goes to our schools. Again, no child should ever feel excluded and no child should ever feel unsafe in who they are at their school.
Thank you, George. We'll have Daniel answer the question next.
I have no idea what sources are available for the students locally, like George was saying. I do believe it is something that definitely should be available to all students for the, they need to have the education for the community, about the community. They all need to be made to feel safe. Everybody should feel safe in their school. And the resources need to be available for everybody to understand not just about the people who are in the LGBTQ community, but for those in the community themselves to understand who they are, because a lot of them are as they're current to come out, they are new to this and they are often scared and unsure of what's going on. And so very good, strong education and a lot of good resources for these, this communities, these students, families and staff. It's going to be very important to help make sure everybody feels included, everybody feels wanted, and everybody feels safe. And so definitely something needs to be reviewed and looked into as I get more into the school board to find out what sources are available, both locally and wider, wider range.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll have Cecil answer the question next.
Thank you. Two years ago, I was at a Willsey Wood High School wrestling match. And I noticed that their 106-pound competitor was a freshman wrestling on the varsity, taking his fair share of lumps because he did not have the experience at that level. I later found out in talking to this wrestler that the challenges he faced on the mat were nothing compared to the challenges of being born a female and deciding when he got to high school that he wanted to be a boy, a young man from now on. I told him at that time, I thought he was one of the bravest people I've ever seen because you know how much grief he gets because of his decision. When I offered to write a story for a local publication about this wrestler, I was politely told, we're not going to touch that. I recently did write a story for a local publication about a very prominent Vacaville family in which the adult daughter is gay. And I said, can we talk about that as part of the story? And she said, Cecil, no, not in Vacaville. I have a daughter. There have been a number of graduates from our high schools, some of them very prominent athletes in their day. Actually, one of them was elected to the, one of our school's Hall of Fame just last year, who are gay, who have come out. But they don't want it in print, not in Vacaville, because we won't touch that. That's the challenge we face. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Our next question will be asked by community member Sarah Wahlberg around school and city relations.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Sarah Wahlberg and I've been a citizen in Vacaville since 91. I was 13 when we moved here. I've attended Vacaville schools. I attended Vacavilla and Willsey Wood. I'm a graduate of Willsey Wood. I have raised two kids. One is a 2020 graduate from Buckingham. My daughter is a freshman at Buckingham. They both attended the ACE program and ACE Charter School as well. Now, with my 14-year-old, she is very involved in competitive sports, school athletics and extracurricular activities, as well as sports and clubs. I've experienced multiple times during her time through school because of her participation in the lack of communication and a relationship between the Vacaville Unified School District and the city of Vacaville. My question to the candidates is, based on the above, what would you, as a Vacaville Unified School Board member, do to create or better a relationship between the two entities and better the way the two operate in a partnership versus separately to better our youth's chances in success?
Thank you, Sarah. Our first candidate to respond to the question will be Kelly.
Hi, thank you, Sarah, for the question. I, I definitely think this school district and the city can, can work better together. You know, they share the same goals that, you know, our children should be safe and healthy and well-educated and you know, contribute positively to the community. So I think it, it just makes sense that the school district and the city, you know, work on, on those common goals together. I think we need to look into public and private partnerships and resources that we can use to meet the needs of our students and serve the larger community. So that would be like pursuing strategies to ensure that our youth are prepared for higher education or trained to enter the job market. And so supporting some implementations of programs and developing career pathways. I know we have a good CTE program, but I'd like to see, see that enhance some more and basically ensure that our, our students can enter the modern competitive workforce. And it would be good to have more partnerships with our businesses, our local businesses. And if the city could help coordinate that, that would be good. I think they can work together to open school facilities for after-school care. There, there could be more affordable homes near schools. And city programs for family assistance. There's a lot of different things we can do. But I think that like just an overall plan between the city and the district to, you know, have like a children and youth sort of master plan that will our, our kids, you know, enter into adulthood and prepare for their further education or workforce would be a good start is to, you know, sit down and have an inter-agency sort of work group between the city and the school district.
Thank you, Kelly. Our, the next candidate to respond will be Tracy.
Thank you. And thank you, Sarah. So I think it's really important for everyone to know that we actually have, there's always relationship building to be done, but I'm really proud of our superintendent. So Dr. Jane Semia and the board over the years have really focused on the parts of the relationship that have not always been great and where we needed to improve. You know, shared use agreements and those kinds of things. And, and so our, our president and another board member and our superintendent meet with the mayor and other city council member and the city city manager on a very regular basis. So one of the big projects that we're working on right now is Buckingham is moving to our, our campus at the park on Montevista. And it's going to be amazing. But we had to work really closely with the city and we had a great working relationship with them. A lot of times our joint use agreements get wonky in space, right? So fields and gyms and it gets down to liability and time and access and, and union details are found, who can be there and who can open them. And so that's, I think, will always be a conundrum that we're going to be focusing on, on leveraging and improving so that we have better access for community to use, community space. But things have gotten better because it has been recognized for many years that there's a breakdown. There's also, the board actually prioritizes having at least one member of the board assigned or volunteers to be a representative on our behalf at the Vacaville Youth Roundtable meetings. So once a month at seven o'clock in the morning, students and teachers and city staff and school staff meet. And they actually did have recently, just two years ago, because I was, I formatted it for it. So it's really familiar with the the Vacaville Youth Plan. There's actually a plan around the expectations of the partnership of what we want for our kids and how the city wants to be an ambassador of that. So there is a lot of work going on. And clearly, we need to do a better job of communicating and making parents feel like they have access because it comes down to joint use is really the thing that makes everybody cranky. And so we need to keep going.
Thank you, Tracy. The next candidate to respond will be George.
So, as I said before, I'm very proud of my family's heritage with Vacaville, having been here for well over a century. But I will admit, I, I moved away for a time for school and, and for career starting. But when it came time to start a family, my wife and I knew that the place to be was Vacaville because of its schools. Vacaville as a city, its greatest asset are our schools. And we need to leverage that fact with the city to let them understand that that's one of our biggest draws. As we see the Bay Area just getting so exorbitantly expensive to live and the Central Valley itself also seeing those peaks and increases, Vacaville is in a prime location to grow and expand. And one of its biggest draws, as I said, will be our schools. It's important to make sure that we have those connections with the city to make sure that we're being supportive of the city's goals and that the city is being supportive of our goals. You know, when we were in crisis, one of the biggest things that stepped up in the early 2000s, as I said before, was the Vacaville Public Education Foundation. That came out of city members creating a foundation to help the schools. So I think that the relationship has been there. If it's gotten rocky in the past few years, it's time to start building back on that again. Because again, Vacaville schools are Vacaville's biggest assets and we need to leverage that.
Thank you, George. The next candidate to respond will be Daniel.
This is one of the topics I'm going to have to learn about as I go. I'm new to the entire school board thing. And I'm not fully aware of the entire relationship between the city and this, and the district at this time. I do know, like George was saying, that schools are vitally important as Vacaville continues to grow and build houses and new businesses come to Vacaville, that the schools available to those families that are coming in is going to be a very important decision for them to want to move here. And we need to make sure that we are partnered with the city to make sure that the rate of growth for the city and the rate of growth for the availability of room in schools is equal. Because if you have too many people coming in and not enough room in the schools, people are going to start to come, stop coming in. And so we need to make sure we are very well partnered to make sure that everything stays on an even level there so that, you know, we still look very appealing to bring in new, new businesses, new people, new families and new students, you know, to help increase our diversity.
Thank you, Daniel. The next candidate to respond to the question will be Cecil.
Sarah, I'm so glad you're the one that asked that question. Let me make sure I understood you. Your daughter graduated from Buckingham last year and was an athlete?
My son graduated last year. My daughter is currently there as a freshman.
And she's an athlete?
Yes.
Was your son an athlete as well?
No.
Okay. Well, I would like to ask your daughter at the end of this year, after playing sports at Buckingham, how does it feel to play your games at a junior high? Or whatever field you can find in town, because you've been moved into a facility that does not have athletic facilities for a high school of 600 students. I thought that was a really bad decision to move Buckingham to Ullatus Elementary School. And oh, now they're going to build a multipurpose room there. That's going to be part cafeteria, part theater, part gym. That's not for 600 high school students. Once again, short-term fix to a long, instead of a long-term solution. I was here at The Reporter in 1989. In 1990, I became the sports editor when Willsey Wood became a high school without a football stadium, a swimming pool, or tennis courts. Took them till night, took them till 2018 to get a football stadium. So Willsey Wood students could graduate at their own high school. Instead of having to go over to the black and orange of the crosstown stadium to graduate. So here we are again. We're not doing anything different with Buckingham. We're shortchanging those children because it's a short-term fix. We'll be okay in the long run. But for you right now, your, your son, well, if you're playing games at Jepson or you're playing games at a city park, yes, we need to work with the city, but we need to also address our own facilities and how we use them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. And the last question, the last candidate, but not the least, will go to Michael to respond.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Sarah, it's nice to, nice to see you after a long time. I think I haven't seen you for a while. My, my kids went to ACE as well, and that's where I know Sarah. City-school relations. So Sarah, you're right. We need to make it a priority. Maybe we need some municipal counseling. Because it has been difficult over the years. I think that the, the city and the schools have had turf wars. And I think that that has not been helpful to students and not been helpful for people in the city. There are ways that, that there have been very good working relationships. We actually now split crossing guard costs with, with PD. And actually, PD, the police department's been in our schools for a long time, both in counseling, for counseling purposes, and also for school resource officers. And in all the time I've been there, 17 years, we've had very, very good experience with the school resource officers. So there are a lot of people that say, you know, it's not one size fits all. A lot of people say, wow, police did definitely not be in the schools. Well, you know, it's actually been helpful to have police in the schools. They, they interact great with the kids. They, they have been very appropriate. So I just want to put that plug in. But in general, Sarah, I think the only way it's probably going to happen is for the community to really ask for it. The community say, you guys have to do better. School district, city council, you guys have to play better in the sandbox and make sure that things work well together.
Thank you, Michael. Lastly, we'll have our closing statements. You each will have to be given two minutes to summarize your qualifications and make a closing statement. We'll have Tracy start off.
Oh, nope. No pressure. I don't know if going first is a good one on this, but thank you. I appreciate it. So this has been wonderful. It's been wonderful. So these are great questions. And I wish we had even more. I just want to say thank you for the invitation and participation. The thing I want to leave everyone with is that we are really truly facing uncharted territory for education and a whole generation of students are going to depend on the board to be brave, to be innovative, to be inclusive, to be able to have healthy debate with one another and with the community to make sure that we come up with the most the best solutions for distance learning, for getting back into school, kind of what the future holds for our students, to protect their opportunity, to make sure that they have everything they need to still, you know, go into the workforce, go to college, do what they, you know, need to do and want to do as contributing adults and that they're protected and that they're supported. So experience is going to matter. Understanding of systems and how we build this team is really, really important to the community. So I wanted to say that I, the thing I bring the most is that I, I don't mind difficult conversations. I absolutely always put our students first. And I've kind of felt like I needed to, I've learned tonight that we need to do a better job of making sure that you know all of the good work that's happening. So that we can get your feedback, so it can be celebrated, and so that people can feel the support, because there's so much good work. So while we were talking, I made sure I went and looked because of Cecil's point, 25% of our staff, and we don't talk about this, but 25% of our staff is non-white staff. 25% of our staff, and we don't talk about this, but 25% of our staff is non-white staff. Asian, African-American, Latino. Um, you know, the LCAP, we every year get more and more inclusive to invite people in. Um, we have such a great relationship with VPEF. Every year, VPEF still funds enrichment activities for our students. Um, the thing we didn't talk about is, is the, one of the, oh, is that it? That was two whole minutes that I just, I apologize.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you. Up next, we'll have George go.
First off, I want to thank the, all of the folks that came forward tonight and asked questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to everyone on these very important topics. Um, I'd like to continue the conversation, continue the discussion. I encourage you to check out my Facebook page, which is George Burton for Vacaville School Board, uh, seat seven. I would like to take a moment and just express my deepest condolences to those that lost their lives and to those who were impacted by the recent LNU lightning complex fires, including many that are in the district for which I'm running for. I also want to express a huge thank you to all the first responders who did their best to ensure that more families did not suffer a similar fate. Tonight, the discussion has really been around inclusion. That's what I've been hearing most is that we are looking to see how we are being inclusive. And we need to build on that discussion and ensure that our schools are being inclusive, that our classrooms are safe and secure. And, uh, in doing so, we will build people that leave these schools, understanding that Vacaville is the place that they want to stay and it will continue to grow our community. Again, I just want to thank everyone for asking questions tonight. And I want to let you know that I'm here for the long term and I plan on being around for a very long time. And I look forward to seeing you at the ballot boxes and seeing you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, George. We'll have Daniel go next.
I am very excited to start my, um, journey through the, uh, school board. Running unopposed, I get to just wait until I get in there and I get to, um, boldly and zealously advocate for our students. I'm really excited about the opportunity to try to see where things are, where we can move them forward. And especially with COVID times, uh, the huge change in education, that way that schools being taught with the distance learning is going to affect ongoing, even when kids get to go back to schools. It's still going to affect how we continue to teach them. Uh, I agree with George that it is very much about inclusiveness, um, with everybody. Um, all genders, races, orientations, everything. I look forward to being able to help push those agendas forward and make the schools as, as, as beneficial as possible to everybody.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll have Cecil go next.
Thank you. I know some of you probably are thinking by now, oh my God, what is he going to say next? I'm running unopposed. I could have sat here tonight and said very little. I could have played it really safe and giving you the nice answers of, we're doing great and we've got money saved and whatever the case may be, but I'm not afraid to tackle the issues. I'm not afraid for my voice to be heard. I'm not going to run and I'm not going to hide. I was a sports editor here for seven years when we opened a second high school. And trust me, there was plenty of phone calls from angry parents that I took. So I'm not worried. I'm not worried about that. What I am worried about is the direction we're going in education. My wife taught for nearly 40 years. And this is the things we need to discuss openly. We talk about money. We talk about funding. We talk about these items. And yet in the 1980s, a decision was made that Vacaville didn't need a second high school. So they cut loose the students east of Peabody Road and south of Alamo and said, go to Travis Unified. Well, if you haven't been out on Leisure Town and Bannon Roads recently, you've seen all that construction. Bannon's going to explode with all the kids going there. Once again, that was a short-term fix, not a long-term solution. That's what I want to see us do. Thank you again, and I look forward to meeting you. My website, Vacavilleinsider.com, phone number, email, call, contact me whenever you want.
Thank you, Cecil. We'll have Michael go next.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this has been a very interesting evening. Uh, I really want to, uh, thank the people that put it together. I think that, you know, people need to hear different sides of things. People who don't normally participate in the process need to participate. So I really appreciate that a lot. And thank you very much for putting on this forum. You know, this is a very, very tough time, very tough time. COVID has knocked the crap out of all of us. Okay, 46 people and 47 people in Solano County have died. Over 5,000 people have gotten the virus. School funding is really challenged. Curriculum is really challenged. Uh, safety is really challenged. Mental health is really challenged. All those things really point to the fact that, that we need a steady, experienced hand. Uh, I welcome Cecil and Daniel to the board. You guys have been really open about your inexperience with actually dealing with school board stuff and I respect that. I'm sure that you'll be fine, school board members. But I think it's also really important to have people around that have been through it, have been challenged, understand school finance, understand LCAP and what that means. And finally, I want to say that I, I'm just really proud that the other day I got a message from the Vacaville Teachers Association that I got their endorsement because that's a really key endorsement. When the teachers believe in you after 17 years of representing this district, that really means a lot to me. So I wish everybody luck and good fortune and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Last but not least, we'll have Kelly give her closing statement.
Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for putting on this forum tonight. Um, it's, it's been great to listen to everybody and, um, and discuss all these important issues. So, um, basically, you know, as, as a new school board member, I would bring my, uh, vibrant passion to the work and challenges that, you know, I, I would, I would see as a school board member. Um, I have a documented career in public service and that's provided me with the tools to develop, assist, assist, um, collaborate, have leadership style. And then my experience as an attorney has also enhanced my communication and writing skills. So, um, that's furthered my, uh, persistence and patience and continues to teach me to always value honest and respectful discussions. Um, I have a lot of different, uh, priorities that I've kind of spelled out in the answers to the questions that, uh, you've given tonight, but, number one is, you know, figuring out the distance learning. I'm going through it with my kids. I know every other parent is struggling with it as well. Um, but I think we can all work on this together and make sure that when we do return, it's, um, only under, uh, you know, safe circumstances. And, uh, making sure our students and, and teachers and staff are all, uh, back on campus in, um, safe, uh, under safe circumstances. Um, and, you know, I'd like to see the ethnic studies pass. I'd like to see, um, LGBT, LGBTQ issues addressed more, um, mental health in our schools and, uh, needs to be, uh, a priority and our special ed students need to be supported more. I think that, um, also I'd like to see more of our, our STEAM education, um, improve a little bit. Um, I'm endorsed by the Vacaville Teachers Union and I'm also endorsed by the SEIU and the Napa Solano, uh, Central Labor Council. Uh, so I'm excited to have all that community support. And overall, I believe I'm a strong candidate for the Vacaville Board of Trustees and, um, if elected, I would work diligently to improve the life of students and teachers and staff and parents in the district. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kelly, for the closing.
Uh, thank you all for, um, attending tonight. Thank you to the candidates, um, for all of your, um, insightful information, um, and responses to the questions. Uh, thank you all to the community members, the six community members who came and showed up tonight to ask some really challenging questions. Uh, we really appreciate your engagement. Um, and thank you to Vacaville People's Forum for, um, allowing me to co-host tonight with, uh, Zayanya. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to her to close out the night. Thanks again to all the candidates and good luck.
Thank you to all the candidates and community members that came out and joined us for our Zoom meeting. The video will be posted on Facebook and YouTube. We'd also encourage community members who are watching to like the page so that you get updates about videos and future forums we'll be hosting. And that's it. Thank you all for joining us. I hope you have a good night.
Thank you.